Our mission to give all of our students hope for a better tomorrow and to be the premier school district in the state of Missouri. So it takes a village to be able to do that. So we have a lot of folks and I believe Ryan, if you will read here a little, as we had a tragedy in the last two or three weeks, that a lot of folks from a school standpoint that had to come together and address that. So Ryan?
Yes.
I'll turn it over to you.
If you all will bear with me since we're taking the time of our three difference makers tonight, I just fill it all up. But we did decide it would be appropriate to recognize our JCPST team members that worked on the tornado response. So I think you'll have a copy of this too, but just wanted to read it to you now. The May 22 tornado that struck Jefferson City left a tremendous amount of damage in its wake. Damage to homes, damage to property, damage to businesses, and damage to several of our school buildings. But as is the case in so many devastating situations, it is often the worst emergencies that bring out the best in people. And that's exactly what we've seen demonstrated by so many difference makers from our Jefferson City Public Schools team. Few examples. Within minutes of the tornado and upon hearing of the damage to several of our schools, individuals from our facilities team and building administrators sprang into action. Initial damage assessments were conducted immediately in the overnight hours. When the Jefferson City Police Department needed a facility large enough to serve as a Red Cross shelter for those displaced by the storm, several JCPST team members made arrangements to open Thomas Jefferson Middle School in the middle of the night so families would have somewhere safe and dry to take shelter. Members of our Food Services Department pitched in right away to get the ovens up and running at TJ and provide a warm meal to the families and children who came to the shelter on the first morning and for many, many days to follow. On the morning of Friday, May 24th, several hundred JCPST team members joined forces to step up, pitch in, and volunteer to clean up debris on and around the grounds at several of our schools. Their collective action, kind hearts, and helpful hands helped tremendously to tackle some of the most immediate needs at several district properties. Our district employees worked diligently in the days following the storm to ensure that summer school would be up and running as planned. This required a tremendous amount of logistical planning to ensure that students displaced by the storm would have the transportation they need to get to the school. It required flexibility to find a location to serve students who would have attended summer school at Simonsen, and it required commitment by many in this room to ensure the Red Cross shelter open at Thomas Jefferson could continue operating while ensuring the learning environment would not be impacted. Ben Meldrum, the principal at Simonsen and soon to be Capital City High School, said he would like to give a shout out to Frank Underwood, Wes Schuldy, John Moon, Ryan Borman, and the entire maintenance and custodial teams for their countless hours of work and efforts to help clean out Simonsen. This group of folks was instrumental in being able to salvage many items that would have otherwise been destroyed. Their efforts were second to none and greatly appreciated. Sarah Wilding, the principal at Southwest Early Childhood Center, where as you may know, staff volunteers and donation helped to make a free garage sale for those impacted by the storm, gave credit to Alice Messenger, a parent educator at Southwest who is truly a difference maker in our community. When the idea of a free sale was hatched, Alice was right there to lend her expertise in management of donations and providing the organization needed to make this venture a success. The event was hugely successful largely due to her generosity and ability to draw on past experiences with disaster relief and family assistance. So it's nearly impossible to stand here tonight and thank everyone who stepped up to the plate during this great time of need in our community. So we thought that this month we could publicly recognize our many team members who truly exemplified stronger together through their actions relating to tornado recovery as our June difference makers. The tornado may have damaged a lot of things, but it did not damage our spirits or our love of this town and this district. Our community will recover and we will do it together. So thank you to everyone. I know Larry wanted to say some words too.
Well, and just look around. I mean, there's so many folks from Dana and the Food Service, from, they were hours upon hours at TJ with the Red Cross. Dr. Fisher here with Lewis and Clark, taking our high school folks who are going to go to Simonsen. Well, obviously that wasn't available, so I'm going, I don't know how to smack you, of going to Lewis and Clark's opening their doors. So everybody, it truly was a team effort. So I just echo those words and thank you for sharing that. And we are indebted to everybody that pitched in and it was great to see folks that, and the old saying of, you know, the things you can get done when you don't care who gets the credit. And there were just so many folks that pitched in for the right motives of what do I, what can I do to help them? And that was so awesome. And community and staff and really coming together. So I appreciate you kind of summarizing that for us. I think that's all we have for difference makers.
Thank you to everybody who pitched in and helped out. I saw many of you at the shelter myself and Dana getting the food out of Simonsen so it didn't spoil and over to Thomas, you know, we just, that was all a good thing. Okay, so we need approval of the minutes from regular open meeting, May 13th, 2019.
Summat.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I guess consent agenda items, I pulled that out separate. We need to approve all the consent agenda items which include approval of transfer funds from the general fund, the financials, the disbursements, and the declaration of surplus property. So I need a motion to approve all consent agenda items.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Onto reports and communications, Dr. Shindler.
Just first, one quick piece of information for you to consider is talking with Bob James, who's been thinking about graduation next year. And because our change in our calendar starting a little later, we will then be going a little bit later. And so we typically, you know, that graduation happens on Mother's Day. Well, Mother's Day next year is going to be on May the 10th. And so Bob James right now is proposing that we move forward with looking at graduation for May 17th, so it'd actually be the week after Mother's Day. And so just want you, just as a piece of information, and if you have any input about that, of course, reach out to us, Dr. Ethel and myself, and let us know. But that's just an initial thinking of where graduation would be for this class, for the upcoming class.
And also, we've had this, just considering different times from Sunday, you know, this year from 5:00 PM, which we've had, we moved back to noon. I know there's been discussions on a Friday evening, there's been discussions on a Saturday afternoon, you have Lincoln's graduation. There's a lot of factors, and so we're trying to explore those, not just having it at the same time because we always have, weigh the pros and cons. And that's a lot of further discussion, but just looking at the May 17th as a possibility. And if you have some ideas on that or whatever, but we'll be vetting that and bringing that back to you.
You still have the State Track meeting? That meeting? That's the class meeting to State Track? That's the next weekend?
It's the next weekend.
Okay, great. Okay.
Okay. Could you bring that up? Okay. Okay, I want to take a few minutes and just talk to you a little bit about SIP planning. And I'm actually going to do that with a focus on our middle schools. But before we talk about middle school specifically, I just want to remind you about the process that's taking place. I've shared this with you in the past. This is actually the school district's improvement plan. And the way this works is we identify five goals that we work around. And we actually, that happens at the central office level. Those goals are, number one, to increase student achievement. Two is to close the gap among subgroups. Third one is to increase graduation. Fourth one is to support an effective and positive culture. And the fifth goal is to provide a safe, caring environment that supports the well-being of all students and staff. And so we take those five goals, that is the primary work that we do. We give this document to our schools. And we ask that as they begin to look at their planning, what their work's going to look like at the school level, that they focus on these five goals. So new this year, if you come back down, are the, is the next column, which is really a measurement. So how are we going to know if we got any better on those five goals? So for example, you'll see that we put in there percentages of increase that we anticipate getting. So percent of students reading on grade level, it'll be 65% by the end of the year, 3% growth on, for math, 3% for sciences. So we list percentages of growth, and then we monitor ourselves to see if we're making the progress that we would anticipate. Those are set at the central office level. Then the next column, which is blank right now, is the work that the buildings do. And so that's the action steps. That's, what's that going to look like out in the schools? And so what we ask the principals to do is to put together a leadership team or a whole school faculty group type thing, and you get around the table and you look at your data, look at where you're at, look at the work that needs to be done at the school level, and then ask yourself, what will we do at this school in order to increase achievement or close the gap or increase graduation? What are the action steps we're going to do this year to help the district get that percentage of increase that they're shooting for? So that's the form, that's what it looks like when they get the form. And then they work at the building level. So when they come back, we get 18 different plans that have a lot of different action steps because they're not, they're not the same at every site. So we have all 18 of those plans. They start coming in May 1st. And then the process is, is Gary and Lori begin to, myself, begin to look at those plans to see if the action steps are realistic, is there anything we need to support, some pieces that are missing. And so we start reviewing those plans and then we give feedback, and we'll talk about that here in just a minute. But just so you can see, if you'll bring up Thomas Jefferson, this is what it looks like when it comes back to us. So it comes back to us, completed with action steps, is in the center column there. And if you'll scroll down so we can see the headings on the next two, Jason. So then what they do is after they decide on an action step, is we ask them to identify, do you have data that would indicate where you're currently at with that, with that goal? And not only where you're currently at, but what is your, what are you going to attempt to get to? So you look at a measurement for, here's where we're at, and here's where we want to get to. Because what we do is we take all 18 sites, we look at what their measurement, what their goal is, and we try to determine if every school met their goal, are we going to get to the increase that we put at the district level? Because we realize we can't get the district goal measurement unless every building is meeting their needs. And so there are cases when we go back to the school and say, you know, you put in there that you're going to have a 2% or a 5% increase in this area, we believe you could do 7% or 8%. And some might say, well, we're going to get 80%. And we might say, well, let's be a little more realistic, let's talk about what you can really accomplish. So we work with those measures, but we're trying to accomplish, do their measures, do we believe their measures will eventually get us to our measures? And so this is what a completed plan looks like when it comes back. And we're going to talk about the middle school plans here in just a minute. One more document I want to show you. After the schools complete these plans, what we do next is, if you'll bring up the PD, scroll down so we can see the top, this is a budget planning sheet. And so our schools get PDC dollars for using for professional development. They can use that to bring in consultants, they can use it to send staff off to training, and they also get instructional supplies. So what we ask that they, what they do is, we actually plug in the totals there for them because we know what their PDC budget is and what their instructional budget. If they get other funding from grants and stuff, they'll plug in those totals, and they'll give us a total revenue line. Here's how much money we're going to get at this school. Then what we do is the next few, two boxes, is we ask them, of the money you're going to get, what do you anticipate buying in terms of supplies? And we'd ask that you, that they list those on there. And then the next column, more important is, where are you going to spend your dollars with professional development? Because we believe that if you're going to attain the goals that you put on that SIP plan, you're going to need some professional development. Some people are going to do some growing and some learning. And so we ask that they list for us all of the description of what the PD is going to be, where you're going to get that money, and what's it going to cost you. And what we look for on our end is, is it good quality professional development? Do we believe that it's going to support their plan that they turned into us? And then two, are they using their money wisely? We know that you're going to get, you have a budget of $25,000. How are you spending that $25,000? Are you using it wisely and getting the professional development that you want? And then new this year, if you'll scroll down to the next box, is, we had some schools that used up all of their PDC and supply money and said, we still have needs, we still have people who need to go to some training or need to bring in some consultants, and they were out of money. So what we did this year is, we always hold back a little bit of the 1% PDC. So this year, instead of holding a back, the bottom box says, you see additional PDC funds, is any school that spends their allotment from the top column and they still need more money, they can submit a proposal to say, we need additional dollars in order to, for additional training, and we review that and then we'll fund those for them. So that's new this year. So those documents go together. SIP plan is, here's the plan, here's how we believe we can get better, and here's how we're going to spend our money to do it. Okay? And so then those plans come into us, and we've been reviewing those over the last few weeks. So if you'll go back to TJ's SIP plan, completed plan. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to have Mr. Slus, Gary, come up here. I'm going to have him talk, and when we get these plans, this is TJ's SIP plan, their plan to get better. I'm going to have him talk a little bit about, what does he do with this plan, and how does he support Sean and TJ to ensure that this plan gets carried out with fidelity?
So first and foremost, I'd just like to reiterate how important it is. I think we're in the goodest shape as we've ever been as far as the principals going back to their buildings and getting buy-in from the staff. You know, whether it's the high school and they're saying, hey, science department, let's come up with a goal for science achievement. So I think we're at a good spot there. I know Deanne's here, she can speak to it, I don't want to put her on the spot. But, you know, I think sometimes in the past, there's just so much to do, but the emphasis placed on the involvement of creating these action steps is very important. And one of the things that we keep talking about over and over is sometimes, or not sometimes, but oftentimes, less is more. I was a building principal just two years ago, and I know how extremely difficult of a job that is. And, you know, everything's important, everything's important. But how can you proportion your time and energy on the action steps that will make the biggest difference? And so what I do is, when all the principals turn these in on May 1st, I go through and just kind of use my own annotations and smiley faces or check marks or underline or put a question mark. And then we read, then we visit, and we do some tweaking. And probably one of the more overriding comments, feedback after the first submission is maybe turn the action steps a little more into a SMART goal. And then, you know, how's it going to be monitored and what's the level of accountability? And again, that will only have its greatest impact. You know, we really worked hard on set of listing everything that we've been doing. And not that what we've been doing is not important, but what is going to move the needle the most and make the biggest difference, and differentiate it. You know, within one building, it might be different for one department than it is another department. Or in those five strategies on the far left, you know, it may vary depending on what your role and responsibility is in the building. And so if we can make it relate to you and each teacher's role in the district, that's where you're going to have your biggest impact. And so those are the conversations that are taken back to the buildings before it was submitted, and now as we tweak it and get a little more specific, it's going to have a tremendous impact on our buildings. And I really think we're, you know, with the buy-in from the staff and their input, we're certainly going to see that needle. And, you know, our report card is the APR, and I think each building's measurements will impact that, and will continue to have that number go up.
Eric, you mentioned SMART goals. How often are you going back and revisiting these with your teams? I mean, I'm hoping that we're not waiting for that reporting to come out.
So that's a great question. And I need to be more intentional with my meetings and my conversations. I look at every conversation I have with my principals as professional development between the two of us. And so, you know, I think at a minimum, you know, we have consultations throughout the year, but I think looking at data quarterly, every piece of data, no, but we know what our, our big things are. You know, our reading scores, our discipline, or the amount of times our students are removed from the classroom. And those are the things that we will really address along with attendance, what's making a difference, what's not, do we need to tweak something? So one of the things that I have on my plan is to be more intentional with my quarterly meetings. And we look at data, but probably need to do so more as far as some of those.
Okay.
So is this the first year that we've done this model, or?
We have used the SIP planning model itself, but this form is new. The measurements that you see at the district level and the measurements at the building level are new this year. We did not have those this past year, and I think it goes to what Lindsay was saying, is now we have, we have an actual goal set to say, we're trying to accomplish this percentage of increase. That empowers Gary and Lori to be able to sit down and monitor to say, remember, your goal was a 5% increase in this area. Let's talk about our piece, we're not going to wait to the end to see if we get five. Did you get two this quarter? Did you get two this quarter? So that is a new piece for us in order to be a little more intentional. Instead of just waiting to the end to see if it's get better, we think that the measurement piece is going to help us with exactly what you're saying.
Okay.
And I would say to you that, those plans all came in and those plans all went back to nearly every principal. There's a lot of question marks and a lot of red to say, let's read things, let's get a little more specific, let's create more of a SMART goal rather than just saying, we want to get better at this. Talk to us about how you're going to get better. Talk to us about what the PD is going to look like, and who's going to be involved, and how are you going to monitor? So we're getting very intentional and specific about those things. Does everybody love that? No, but I think for us to get better, you have to be specific and intentional, and so...
Yeah, it's got to be measurable.
Just to give you some, some numbers, so when all of those, when all 18 plans came in, the first goal of increasing student achievement, there are actually, for next year, 162 action steps across the district working towards increasing student achievement. When it comes to closing the achievement gap, there are 42 goals, action steps across the district. For increasing graduation, there are 33 action steps. For supporting an effective culture, there are 38. And for safe, secure environment, there are 50. So there are over 320 action steps in total among our 18 buildings. That itself's pretty exciting, that there's that much work. And again, I know Gary said, less is more, but you also have to make sure that you got enough too. You have to make sure that we're covering our bases and not leaving gaps. And so we're excited about, we're excited about the plans, we're still in the process of those revisions I just talked about. All the buildings are cleaning them up and making the revisions, but we're really, really close.
That's impressive, Brian.
I have one more question, if you don't mind. So these goals are awesome when it looks at academics and raising the bar and reading and things like that. It seems to me like we've got so many behavioral issues and like you said, removing kids from the classroom and ISS rooms that are full. And how do those kind of things, I mean, will we see that, is that when you strip it down by building, do those things kind of get factored back into the big goal?
So actually, goal number five is where all that stuff gets embedded.
Okay.
So goal five is about the, we didn't say, we didn't just call it behavior and discipline, we actually called it a safe, caring environment, but all of the student management pieces that we're, that we see as important pieces that have to happen are all embedded in those action steps. So yes, it's all put in goal number five.
Awesome.
So you'll see a lot of the changes that we're going to do with, we're going to talk about a little bit with JGR policies, we're going to talk about in the code of conduct, all of that kind of stuff resides in goal five.
And I'm assuming that that factors in like teacher, teacher needs and the things that teachers are coming to us and saying, hey, we need this to be successful in the classroom.
That's where the building should put it. So if the building was to say, we really believe that in order for us to get better, that we're going to need to employ a behavior interventionist or a social worker, that's where that would fall.
Awesome. Okay, thank you very much.
So Brian, I had a quick question. In reference to the ongoing discussions that you guys are having with building principals in terms of like what Gary referenced about being intentional with those meetings and sitting down and having discussions about how the progress is going throughout the year, you know, the information I've looked at during my time on the board that indicates that some of the most, most effective boards of education or the highest functioning boards of education, the research out there kind of indicates that we're part of that conversation, but at an appropriate board level. So it wouldn't be appropriate for us, you know, based, again, one person's perspective, what I've read, wouldn't be appropriate for us to get into like the building level plans and, you know, have conversations with you about that, or the specific action steps that you talked about. But in terms of kind of an overall board level view, in terms of, you know, how's the direction going, how far we've got to go, you know, have we met certain indicators, are we lagging behind others, that kind of stuff? So I'd be curious in terms of what the next steps are for us as a board in terms of how you see keeping us informed and the discussion we have here.
Yeah, and so I would suggest that we, with Tableau, I know we've done some kind of real quick overviews with you, like during the retreat, we talked about Tableau. Dawn's office really has put together a pretty impressive data sheets and not just, not just a bunch of data, but there are data that can show the growth that we're showing over time with, for example, when I talk about the subgroups, or how are our subgroups doing compared to our, to all the other subgroups, and where are we doing with the reading scores and the math scores? So we now have the dashboard, if that's what you want to call it, but it's basically a visual of where we at live with our data in terms of making progress. In the past, we had a whole lot of lumps of data. We get to here and we have another lump of data, we get to here. Well, hers really is live with discipline, with reading scores, math scores. And so I believe that it is much more informative than we've ever had, and so I would hope that we begin using that as our process to keep you informed and to generate questions from you about using Tableau. So I think Tableau provides exactly what you're asking for. And maybe what we do is maybe in July, we just review again what Tableau does and just show you the visuals and let you see what the data is on there and how we're monitoring it.
So I think this is a pretty cool, really good way of doing things. But my question is, is who's being held accountable to these goals? And how are you going to keep them accountable to these goals? I'm like, how, if they're not accomplishing these goals, who's going to be held accountable to that? How are you going to keep, they're going to keep them accountable to succeed?
So ultimately, that happens through the conversations that Gary and Lori have with their principals. So you just need to know that a lot of the goals that are on there happen at the classroom level, and so we would, we would expect that our building principals are monitoring that piece. But at the end of the day, Gary and Lori aren't going to go into the classroom and say, are you, are you getting it accomplished? They're going to sit down with their principal, they're going to look at the data, they're going to see if they're making progress, and then they're going to question why. And if, and maybe the response is, I've got some teachers who aren't doing what they want to, or maybe I didn't do what I was supposed to do. But Gary and Lori will get to the bottom of, why is it that we're not making the progress? Is it because we had the wrong action steps? Do we need to change the action step? Or is it because somebody didn't do what they were supposed to do? Principal, teachers, whoever it is. So that is Gary and Lori's responsibility, to monitor if it's making progress and to determine why aren't we making progress if we're not? Or even better yet, if you're making great progress, how can we take those models and help other schools? So that is Gary and Lori's responsibility, with my oversight.
And I might just ask a question here. So if, I think what he's referencing there when he said the I-ready or the running records of monitoring, measuring progress on reading, the attendance, obviously that's pretty cut and dry, but the student behavior is being removed from the classroom. One thing we'll be doing with our staff survey, this last year, we were doing a parent survey this year, and asking for the perception from the staff and perception from the parents, student behaviors, attendance, the reading aspect. So, but my question for you of quarterly, of monthly, what are you guys looking as a board here as far as looking at those, the actual numbers on those removed from classrooms, the attendance, the running record, the I-ready as far as reading wise? How often is that something you guys as a board are you wanting to look at?
I think personally, monthly, especially until we start to see, we start to really make ground and get better at what we're doing, I think if it's feasible, I think that monthly is appropriate and we could kind of go from there to quarterly if we need to, but, I mean, I know I-ready, that's a little bit different because we only test at certain times of the year.
Correct.
But for attendance, you know, you've got principals that are measuring that daily, competing with groups and...
I mean, if you could generate some kind of a, I mean, a high level summary of that data that you're referencing, so that then we could do some comparison and it wouldn't take an extreme amount of time to do that. I don't believe, if we had statistical data from month to month, it'd be fairly easy to see that.
If we do monthly, I'd echo Kent's point. That's what I'd like to see as a board member is month over month. So, you know, just like some of the information Jason provides us as we go along the fiscal year in terms of where we are relative to target. And so we can, we can see where we, where we were, where we are this month compared to where we were last month, and then we can see, we can lay that side by side with the, with what we're going for, what the target is, what the benchmark is.
That's very good.
We will have to keep in mind though, that Gary and Lori are only going to be meeting with their principals quarterly. So if we're having questions and asking them questions, if they haven't had a chance to meet with their principals and revise their plans, that, you know, we have to time those questions appropriately so that they can provide us answers. Thank you though, and what I like about that the best is that we're working together with the principals and they're telling us that they need resources, we're going to try to divert resources to them so they can be successful. we're going to try to divert resources to them so they can be successful. Because it does truly take all of us to be stronger together and...
It does.
We've got so many, too, that can help each other. You've got something that might be working in one building and not working in another, and we can do lots with collaboration.
We have all at the same time, so we can collaborate.
Right.
Replication. Best flattery is imitation, right?
Any more for your report? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brian. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. All right, Jason?
Good evening.
Evening.
So here in a little bit, Frank is going to be presenting the final route approvals for you guys to approve. And it seems kind of weird that you're going to be approving them after they're done, but by law, that's what we have to do. So that's kind of putting transportation for this year behind us. And next year, transportation is going to be a huge focus area, and there's going to be a lot going on with transportation. As we change start times, we're going to be completely redoing routes. So August, as we redo the routes, that's going to be a huge undertaking. We're also going to make student behaviors a priority next year on the bus. So we had a meeting, actually, the last week of school. We had several principals that came to the meeting. Dr. Fisher was one of them. I appreciate all of those that came. We had two bus drivers, a monitor, Brandon from First Student, and some other folks from First Student. And it was just kind of the first step of us getting together and how do we work more as a team instead of First Student feeling, here we have all these issues and we're not getting any support from the school district, and the school district saying, we have all these behaviors on the buses and we don't have any control over it, and we're really need to work better as a team. And I thought it was a great meeting. Brian was in attendance, and, and he's offered to take some of our expertise that we have on how to handle student behaviors and bring that into the, to the bus drivers. So we're going to develop a professional development plan that we're going to provide to bus drivers to help with how to handle student behaviors on the bus. So really excited about what's going to happen. But then also, next year is the last year of our contract with First Student. So going to be evaluating, putting out an RFP for seeing if other vendors are going to come in, but also evaluating, do we look at bringing it in-house? So transportation is going to be a huge focus area next year. You might have heard that there was a bus accident a couple weeks ago, and there was an editorial in the paper saying that we should investigate when we have bus accidents. And, and we certainly agree that student safety is a huge priority, and we've actually written a response, and I've been told that they're going to print our response later in the week. But just wanted to let you know that anytime there's an accident, First Student does a root cause analysis, they do a thorough investigation, looking at mechanics, looking at bus videos, interviewing the driver, other witnesses. In this case, the police were out, looking at the police report. So just wanted you to be aware that certainly, we do think investigations need to happen, and they do occur. So any questions about transportation before I move on?
I believe there was no ticket issued.
No ticket issued, correct.
To take a incident, so that our law enforcement didn't find a fault. Unfortunate it happened, but there was not a ticket issued.
Correct. Two weeks from tonight, we'll meet again to talk about the budget. Things are shaping up well. And if you remember back in March, we did the preliminary budget that had preliminary raises. And so we did just the step movement on the schedule, which was about a 1.8% increase, and then that similar percentage raise for all other staff members. But at the same time, we said, we're being very cautious on state funding, on local funding, and if things prove to be as good as what we think they're going to be, we would probably come back to you and ask for additional raises. And all of those things have happened. The state has approved full funding of the foundation formula, they've actually increased funding for the transportation formula. The state's revenue outlook, which looked really dire earlier on, has bounced back like the governor and the staff at OA have thought it would. So things are looking very good at the state level. The local level, when we presented in March, we were being very cautious. This is a reassessment year. So we're, we're able to not only get increases due to new construction, but also the assessor's supposed to look at all the current property and see if it's increased in value. And we get to, we get to get that, we get to increase our revenue up to the CPI of that year. And when we did this in March, we were cautious on what that growth would look like and what CPI might be, and we, we expected a 1% increase. CPI actually came in at 1.9%. So we don't know the real numbers or what will happen with reassessment. With talking with the assessor, it doesn't look like we're going to get all the way to 1.9%, but he says he feels comfortable with the 1%. So the conservative number we used on local revenues looks good. The state revenues are going to be more than what we were thinking when we did the budget. So when I come back in two weeks, I'm planning to bring additional increases for staff. And so on the teacher side, somewhere in the $500 to $1,000 added on to the beginning salary schedule, which then flows through. So that would be about 1.3 to 2.6 additional for everyone else. So wanted to put that out today and see if anyone had concerns about that. But the budget is looking, looking very good right now.
Jason, I don't have concerns, but tell me again or tell us again, because I think this is a drum that's worth beating, because you hear a lot in the, in the media today and have for a while about teacher salaries. And I think sometimes there's a misconception of how Jefferson City ranks compared to a lot of other districts around itself. And I know you've given us, MSTA did a salary study not too long ago.
No, and I know you've quoted that for us, so.
Right.
But tell us, again, can you go over how we rank?
So we've, we've had a goal that we want to have the best compensation package in mid-Missouri. We, we can't compete with St. Louis and Kansas City. But we're not going to get someone that's currently teaching in St. Louis, or they grew up in St. Louis, we're not going to get them to move here, even if we had the same pay. We, we want to be that if you want, if you're going to live in mid-Missouri, we're going to make it to where our compensation package makes it attractive to be in Jefferson City. And so we've been third, we've been behind Camden Town and School of the Osage as far as starting pay and master's pay. So we're right in the 2-3 range, and we're, we're right there. And I'm sure those schools are going to be adding into their salary schedule. So just to keep where we're at, we probably need to add some, but I'd sure like to catch them and get to be number one.
So that includes Columbia, too?
Yeah, we...
We do better than Columbia.
Our compensation package.
And when you say we're right there, I think it's, it's less than $1,000 difference between us, I think, right?
It's like...
Far less than that.
Less than $1,000 to get to first.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. So any concerns of, I mean, I don't have the right numbers yet, but it's, I'm planning to bring additional raises for staff, so just wanted to... And then the final thing I just wrote down when Brian was talking about graduation, you know, we've moved the start of school back due to construction this year, but normally we would have started around the 15th, 16th, the Thursday. The General Assembly passed a bill this year that says schools can't start school more than 14 days prior to Labor Day. So that would mean where we would normally start on Thursday, we now couldn't start legally till that following Monday. So this doesn't take effect, it doesn't affect next year at all. But just know that when we start talking about the 2020-21 calendar, that law will be in effect and won't be able to start where we normally do, which will impact where we have PD days and graduation and, I mean, we want to start sometime and we want to end before another time, it all just compresses. So. Any other questions for me?
Questions for Jason? Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Yes, echo Ryan's response there, just with the tornado and everyone coming together. I cannot say that enough. We had so many folks that came together, and I just want to say thank you. We finished a, a great school year. Our, we improved on our APR. Those numbers this current year, those will not be coming out here for, have not came out, but last year's improved for a fourth year in a row. Our reading scores have improved. All of our grade levels have improved from kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, fifth grades, all improved. They took that our middle schools as far as the seventh and eighth, sixth improved, but seventh and eighth went down. So they've got plans to improve that, as Brian and Gary touched on earlier. Our facilities committee met last Thursday. Just kind of want to give a summary of where we're at. The first facilities committee meeting was on March 7th. There's been four meetings. There was on March 7th, April 4th, May 2nd, and June 6th. At that first meeting on, I'll just kind of, an overview on the 7th of March was just to, an overview of our space needs. When I arrived in the district in July 1 of 15, it was that we have K through 12 overcrowded. And with the passing of J plus C, we appreciate the community supporting us. We've addressed the 9 through 12 space needs. But we still have K through 8 space needs. So we discussed that. We're not looking at raising any taxes before anybody throws anything at me. But what can we do as we look forward to, what are our options to consider to address our K through 8 space needs? So a committee with board members, Lori and Steve are serving on there. We have staff members, we have parent members, we have community members that have served on that. So that first one was kind of an overview. On the 4th, and I'll back up Brenda Haffield, who's not here this evening, she has facilitated this, gathered staff input from committee members and our staff, kind of gave an overview of that on the 4th of April. We wanted staff members to go to our buildings to get a better understanding. Some of the committee members have not been in many of our buildings, and so they did that to get a general, a better feel for our buildings, and tried doing it during school time when we had students there. It's one thing to go in an evening when it's an empty building, but seeing as it lives and breathes during the school day, come to a lunchtime in a, at the high school during a lunchtime. They're just differing, it, it brings a lot, a whole new perspective in our buildings. So they came back, gave an update on those on the 2nd of, of May at that meeting. And then on the 6th, we just met here last week, and on the 6th, and it was basically of takeaways from the tours, the surveys, the reports, that additional classroom spaces were needed. And that's what we said at the beginning that we thought, but we wanted to confirm that. DESI's recommendations of, that indicate non-optimal learning environments for many of our schools. There's an increase of ancillary services, speech therapy, occupational therapy, physical therapy, needs that 30 years, years ago, when many of our buildings were built or even older, that those weren't requirements or needs. So we have space needs in our buildings. And with an increase in poverty with our school district, from I referenced when I, my first year teaching here in 95, we were 23% was our poverty rate as a school district, and we are now 59%. So with that, we would like to have smaller class sizes and smaller buildings. So we're making headway on that with the passing of J plus C of Capital City and the renovations at Jeff City High School. So the committee looked at, ACI Bolin had given a report for the Long Range Facilities Committee six, five, six years ago, and looking at, hey, here are the space needs. So we asked them to do an audit again, an updated audit, and they did that. And they confirmed that we have space issues in our K through 8 buildings. So the task of the committee was just to consider options to address K through 8 space, K through 8 space needs with the pillars of learning, partnership, and stewardship guiding that. And that, that's what the committee did. And they basically looked at three options, starting out of adding additions to our elementary schools and our middle schools. So we have K through 8 buildings, we have 18 schools total, we have 11 elementary schools, we have Southwest sort of childhood center, we have two middle schools. Do you add on each of those? Okay, that was an option that they talked through and considered the pros and cons. And option B was to add a new elementary school on the east side and add a new elementary school on the west side, and then add on to Callaway Hills to move current north students and add a middle school in Callaway County, to weigh the pros and cons of that, and looking at a middle school in Callaway County as well. And that was a, okay, that's an option. And then an option of adding two, five, five, six buildings, which one would be on the Thomas Jefferson campus and one would be on the Lewis and Clark campus. That would then make all of the elementary schools K through four instead of K through five. Would make both of our middle schools, seven, eight junior highs with two classes instead of three. And then that would address the space needs as one option. So no decision was made on, hey, what are we going to do? But the committee did give the task of, hey, let's see what it would cost to look at that option of a five, six option behind one at Lewis and Clark and one at Thomas Jefferson. So we want to see what that would cost. If you're going to buy a house or buy a new pickup truck, you probably better know what it costs before you go too far. And so that's what we're, we're looking at. Architect's Alliance is going to be working on this to, what would it cost to consider? We are not looking at raising taxes. We want to be good stewards of patrons' money. The J plus C, we are on, on time and under budget, and so we're excited about that. So we're, we want to make sure that we're doing it right. And if we consider an option going forward to address K through 8, then we would be doing that as well. So that's just kind of an overview. Our next meeting, we'll be giving you an update, seeing what those costs are. We'll make sure and inform you guys where we are in the process. But again, no decision's been made, just looking at, exploring options to consider the K through, K through 8 space needs in a building. Lori or Steve, who've served on that, do you have anything you want to add or comments from the different meetings that we've had, or anything you'd like to add to that?
I think we're just anxious to see what the cost would be for the five, six. And I think the majority thought that, you know, you take five out of elementary, you take six out of middle school, it's a win-win. You're opening space in both, which is what we need.
Right.
And then the possibility of possibly expanding our preschool program, which is an out-of-the-park program. So, so we're just, but we're working on all of it. So we're going to do our due diligence for our tax payers, so.
Just two things to add. One, just a clarification that Lori and I serve not as, as participating necessarily members of the committee, it's more of liaison, an opportunity for us to listen and, you know, hear what the, the committee's discussions were. So the decisions that Larry referenced in his comments, those, those were, those were engaged in and came together by individual members of the committee, the citizens, not board members. The other thing is, you know, I echo Lori's comments, yeah, I, I particularly really think the five, six option is a very attractive one because it, because of the things that Larry mentioned. It's not only does it alleviate some pressure out of the middle schools, which hopefully will address behavior and can help academic achievement, it also reduces class sizes in your elementary buildings across the school district. And from a financial perspective, you know, number one, it's, it's a no-tax increase to be able to build those two buildings. You've got staff on, on salary already, so there's a, there's a minimum number of folks that we would have to hire as opposed to staffing two brand-new buildings like you typically would. And the last thing I think is, you know, there's been a lot of discussion in the community prior to J and C about, you know, doing something on the east side of the community. And our commitment was that, at the time, our commitment was, we would continue to have that discussion and when, you know, when it was appropriate and there was an opportunity to do that. And so to me, I think this kind of checks that box. It represents that opportunity and it, it helps us keep our word in that regard. Thanks.
Do you feel like most people on the committee are leaning that way, that that will be their recommendation?
In my opinion, yes.
Yeah.
I think so, but I think it's...
It's still too...
Yeah, it's very...
There's still work to do.
To determine that. But just to see, and it would again, the five, because we have fifth-grade teachers already in our buildings, and we have sixth-grade teachers in our middle schools, so moving those versus if you built a new school and had 12 elementaries instead of 11, then to fully staff that, the operating aspect would go up significantly. So we want to see what it would cost, and then that can help us better make decisions moving forward. Just an FYI on any other questions on that one, to just kind of keep you up to date. Anything else? Jason or Brian, anything you need to touch on? Okay. And last, I touched on this last month, the rounding with Larry, we're going to start next year. So we have 18 buildings, and I'm going to go meet with our staff two times a semester, so it'll be 36 visits, and believe we're stronger together. So we found out, and our staff has shared, that with the coffee with Larry on the first Friday of each month, many of them have taken kids to school, getting their classrooms ready for the day. It's not really accessible. We've had some, but it's not as easily accessible for them to do that. So looking forward to starting that. And we sent out calendars, letting them know so they can kind of plan accordingly. So just an FYI on that. So, yeah. Do you have any questions for me?
Any other questions for Larry? All right, moving on to old business, second read of MSVA policies, BBF I and JGR I, the one, Ken?
So this section of the agenda is going to be much shorter than last month. So we have only two policies before you, which this is a second read. And so I'm not going to reread them or anything, but you have, you've seen both of them. The first one being BBI, or BBF I, let's look at that one. That is the media guidelines for school board. And again, I won't go over, but it was presented to you at the last meeting. Policy committee brings it back for a second read and would entertain a motion to approve that policy.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? JGR one?
And JGR I, again, is a policy that had a significant amount of information in it, changes from MSVA, but we are, again, just for a second read, giving everybody the opportunity to review it completely. And the policy committee is not recommending any changes from the MSVA as they provided it to us. So would entertain a motion that this be the second read and we approve and adopt.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Anybody?
Second.
Double motions, double second. Any discussion?
We really want to get this passed.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, Ken, for your work on the policy. All right, next is consider and approve the 2019-2020 Integrated Board of History.
Okay, we talked last month. This is the course change that we decided to do for our social studies. And so that team came together and they wrote that integrated course for us. And so you have it, and would entertain any questions or, or approval? And so you have it and would entertain any questions or approval of it so we can get that in the hands of teachers.
And this is, if I could just interject, I think as a result of the meeting you have with all of our social studies and all of the social studies staff there at Dix Road.
This, yes, so this was the recommendation of that meeting from the social studies staff is that we get away from the Missouri Studies integration and go to world, world history integration. So that's, this is the curriculum that they wrote.
I'll make the motion to approve. Thank you for your extra work on it. Really appreciate it.
Yes, very much so.
Any further discussion on this item? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New business, consider and approve the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty exploring agriculture.
Okay, this one's coming because it was a late addition as an eighth-grade encore class. And it's come after numerous conversations about kind of a feeder course for our middle school to get into the high school and to Nicholas prayer center. So this is, again, it's an encore class that eighth graders can elect to take it. The study of plant science, animal science, food science, natural resources, ag system technology and agribusiness.
I like it. So moved.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favors?
I was going to say, I think that when you were rounding at some of the buildings that it was identified that this was, there was kind of a gap and this was necessary. So often they kind of see it come full circle.
Yeah, yeah, some of the, I mean, elementary schools who have their greenhouses or their planting beds and stuff. And it's exciting to see and a lot of career opportunities in this track. So I think it's great for the introduction.
Maybe we've got some community partners that would probably like to mess the gardeners and things like that.
I agree.
Reach out to and get some partnerships going. Be great.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Consider and approve two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty world literature.
Okay, world literature actually came to the table because of the change in the seventh period day. When that group came together, they began looking at making the changes for seventh period and realized that there were probably bigger issues with that curriculum than just changing the pacing. And so there had to be some changes to to the standards, where they fall, how they apply to each other. And so the team asked if they could do a revision. We did not change the standards per se, but we made some tweaks to them. But we thought because we made more than just a change to the seventh period, we should bring a team for approval because there were a little more significant changes to it. Again, not changes in the standards that we teach, but it, the way that they're organized has been changed. So that's for approval. Accept.
Would entertain a motion to approve this? So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Alfred. All right, considering approved final transportation routes. Right under.
All right, before you, what you have is a bus metric report. What you're used to seeing is probably a summary of that on Excel page, not PDF. But I thought that this bus metric report, this is where the information comes from, that that summary comes from. I wanted you guys to see what this bus metric report looks like, that that summary page comes from. One shows load times on there as far as the the amount of miles that a student would ride and the time that they're actually on the bus. The routes themselves, some of the routes, you know, that are an hour and a half, they say, well, the route's an hour and a half. Okay, well, the load time is from the first student to the time they get to the school. And so that hour and a half now becomes more like fifty-five minutes maybe or something like that. So it's, but I did want you to, it's thirty-seven pages. I do apologize for that, but it's spread out. But it, bus numbers on the left and then times and miles, deadhead miles, all that good stuff is in this report. I'll be happy to go back to the summary report and do that. But I did want to share this metric report where this comes from for the second semester approval, just so that you can see where it's at. But I would ask for your approval for the bus routes if you don't have any questions.
Would entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion, anybody have any questions?
I saw Simon. Is there abbreviation for Simonson on here, S M?
Yeah, that was for, it's for last year. We're putting these bus routes. I had the same question. I scott, I pulled him over before and said, am I crazy? Or we are, and he said, this is for last semester and for summer.
Sorry. Thank you.
S M S N. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Frank. Okay, now we're on to the consider the contract with Bill Binkley and the Suns Excavators.
Correct. We had a bid go out and then a bid opening for the walk-in freezer edition that we're doing in Callaway Hills. Within that concrete work, they're going to be doing some sidewalk, bringing it back up where it sunk, the curbs down along. Let's see, I guess that would be the north edge of the property and doing that along with that. We thought having them do that concrete work while they're doing that freezer foundation work definitely resulted in a much less expense to that. And the rest of the sidewalk has plans in the future going forward. I don't know if you've seen Callaway sidewalk, but the curb is probably about two inches higher than sidewalk because the sidewalk sunk. So there are plans coming up to replace all that, make it all level, less, a lot less of a trip hazard. But I do submit this contract for approval for forty-two thousand four hundred dollars for the sidewalk and freezer foundation.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Kay Behrson?
All right, yeah, Thomas Jefferson, the two mobile classrooms that we put out back, there will be a requirement for thirty-six peers per trailer to go in there. This is a low bid out of three that we had, fourteen thousand five hundred dollars to put those peers in place and to set the the mobile classrooms out back. If you have any questions, please ask. Otherwise, I submit this for approval.
So moved. Second. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
All right, Bridget Gray? Consider and approve contract with Department of Social Services, MoHealth Net Division.
Okay, so what you see here is a cooperative agreement with Department of Social Services, MoHealth Net Division and our school district. So this allows us basically to participate in direct service claiming, which basically is a way for us to receive some reimbursement for the medical services that we provide to Medicaid eligible students. So this should be a good news for our district. We have participated in this in the past. The difference is in the past, we've received a pretty low flat rate for this reimbursement. And this new cost settlement agreement allows us to get reimbursement that's closer to the actual cost of what these services are that we provide. So, so we anticipate that this would allow us to receive a pretty good increase in the revenue of this, of these services. It should not require any additional time and effort on the part of our therapists to receive this reimbursement. The steps that we need to take and they need to take to get the these funds would be the same. The only difference is there are a couple of additional personnel that we are allowed to submit reimbursement for now that we haven't done in the past. We do need agreement from, we do need agreement and approval from the board no later than June thirtieth in order for us to participate for the next school year. MSBA will continue to support us in our billing services and there won't be any additional costs from our standpoint from MSBA. So the Medicaid eligible services that we provide include speech, language, therapy, OT, PT services, many of the IEP services that we provide. If you have any questions, I would ask for.
I have a question. Is this a new program with DSS or we're just getting in on this?
It's not a new program. They've changed some of the the funding. So in the past, we still participate in the SDAC portion of this. This is a difference in the direct services. So we've always participated in the direct services. The main difference is the the reimbursement rate that we get. So in the past, our OTs, PTs, SLPs, they complete therapy logs. So they, we get permission from parents of students who are Medicaid eligible that allows us to submit those those reimbursements. So our OTs, PTs, SLPs and some other staff members submit therapy logs when they provide services to those students. So it's not new. It's a, just differences in the amount of funding that we get and and some types of services that we can provide.
So and no any additional staff or you're saying we just are going to be able to get reimbursed for some current staff that we?
So all of our, anytime that we currently direct bill, we, that will change to this new formula. There are some changes to the types of therapies that we can bill for. So OTs, PTs, SLPs, we've always done that. We can add some personal care aids. So some of our paraprofessional supports that have, we haven't been reimbursed for in the past. It's very specific on the types of activities. So it would be for a very, very small number of our paras that we could, a very, very small number of our paras that we could submit reimbursement for. There's also some, we're still trying to figure out the rules because it's fairly new that this has come out, some services that our school psychologists provide that we could possibly submit reimbursement for as well, that entails the evaluations that we do. Again, not all of our staff. We only have a couple of staff members on hand who are certified school psychologists. So there's lots of different rules in there on what is billable for a direct service.
Does, does that get billed and broken down on an hourly rate or?
So in the past, we've just gotten a low flat rate. So right now, we get it, with this new agreement, it would be based upon the actual amount of services that we provide. So, and only for Medicaid eligible students, not all of our IEP students. And only for the Medicaid eligible students that we have permission from their parents for.
So good. The hearing aid, is that, is that a new, is that new this year?
Um.
This contract in June?
Yes.
Yes. What is, what?
So that's a great one. We don't have any audiologist on staff. That's something that we contract for right now. So we don't have any audiologist on staff who provide direct services for students with IEPs. The main thing is like a personal care service. So for example, some of our IEP students who have toileting or feeding issues that have para support, we can have the paras participate in that direct service log. So they would be completing therapy logs, basically of anytime they help a student with feeding issues, toileting issues. Again, that is for a very minimal number of our students who have those needs and those are really in our specialized classrooms. The school psych, that that's a new piece again with the evaluation. So we're still trying to work with MSBA on figuring out which of our staff can be on that direct services roster and which of our staffs go on the other roster, which is more just for, here are the types of people that we have that may participate in more medical type things. It's unusual to be on the direct, yes, I would like approval. It's unusual to be on the direct services. In the past, historically, that has just been OTs, PTs, SLPs.
So moved.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Bridget.
Thank you.
All right, Dana, consider and approve two thousand nineteen, twenty breakfast and lunch meal prices.
Good evening. So I'm just to give you a little bit of background. The Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act of two thousand ten set forth a requirement that all school districts or public, private participate in the national school lunch program, complete a paid lunch equity tool. That's a USDA tool. It's, it's an Excel spreadsheet. But the tool will help to determine if schools are on target for what lunch prices should be. So I completed the tool and the tool indicates that the weighted average price for our district should be three dollars. And we're currently at two dollars and sixty-six cents. Raising the lunch prices by twenty-five cents would take the district to two dollars ninety-one cents weighted average price. That's quite a jump. The tool also indicates that a ten-cent cap can be issued for each year so that you would never have to raise more than ten cents a year. But we would still be behind knowing we'd be playing catch-up maybe for the next few years. It's been three years since we did raise lunch prices. So kind of open for discussion here, what you think, what your opinions are.
Why we didn't raise for the last three years?
When I came on board in sixteen seventeen, the tool had been completed, but I found an error in it. And so at that time, it looked like we did not need to complete the tool. And then last year, we did do the waiver option and not raise prices. So that's kind of why we're behind.
So we do have a waiver.
We do have a waiver.
And we're running out of surplus on our program. And so I'm sure that's why we didn't raise them the last few years. But the more years we don't raise them, the further behind we're going to get. And then at some point, we're not going to have the waiver and it's going to be a huge increase. So.
Right, good.
I think we would recommend some increase. I think we would recommend a quarter, but it would be open to some special.
Kids who pay reduced, do they have to pay twenty-five cents more too?
No, reduced price is set by USDA. It never is more than forty cents per lunch and thirty cents per breakfast.
Just our four.
It would just be our pay.
How many percent?
Forty-one.
Forty-one percent?
As in fifty-nine in our own.
And our staff? Do our staff pay these prices as well?
Our staff pays three, three dollars and fifty cents for lunch.
So will theirs go up twenty-five cents as well?
No, this, it would just be the paid lunch equity. Yeah, just the students.
So we're internally subsidizing this gap right now. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. The tool is kind of set up so that the reimbursement we we receive for free meals isn't subsidizing those that don't qualify for free.
So we get more than two dollars and sixty-six cents for a free meal. And we get, when you add the forty cents on for a reduced, we get more than two sixty-six. And we get seventeen cents for a paid lunch, right?
Yeah.
Some reimbursement. But we're currently receiving more reimbursement for a free and a reduced-priced meal than we are on our paid. And so that's what this tool does. It says you shouldn't do that. You need paid people to be paying the same as what you're getting for your free and reduced. This is basically what the tool is having to do.
Yeah, the government doesn't like it when they give more money than you're charging your parents. Make some money.
Well, for a free meal, we're getting three dollars and thirty-three cents. And for each reduced-priced meal, we get two dollars and ninety-three cents in reimbursement. And then each paid is thirty-three cents.
So Dana, how are we doing this year? What, do you have an idea? I mean, we've got basically less than a fiscal month left in our year. So where are we? Feel free to jump in, either one of you guys. How's the program doing this year? Are we got, are we projected to run a surplus again this year?
Yes.
Okay, by how much?
That I can't answer.
Can you slag it? Okay.
Well, the tool said we should be charging three dollars.
Yeah.
Right.
Well.
And they're charging two fifty.
Right.
Two sixty-six.
Should we evaluate breakfast as well?
Breakfast is not a part of this requirement. So we haven't raised breakfast prices in several years. In fact, the reduced-price students, we don't even charge for breakfast. We automatically, we claim them in the reduced category, but we don't charge.
Can you remind me, what did you say the government pays us for a free meal?
Three dollars and thirty-three cents.
And we get how much for a paid meal?
We get, we are getting two fifty for an elementary and two seventy-five for a secondary. Oh, federally, thirty-three cents for a paid meal.
Two fifty and add thirty-three. So they're paying thirty-three, forty-three, then we're even with the federal government on that free, which is where they want us to be, closer.
Right.
Even though we have, have not increased the prices for the last three school years, have you brought this to the board every year to say yea or nay or no?
No.
So in the past, so the board approves lunch prices in the past. It's just been a part of the budget that we've, it's been in the budget narrative and we've said the board's approved the budget and that would've been there. But we feel like this is a way we should be doing it. So this is new this year to bring it as a standalone.
So you anticipate doing the same thing next year, bringing it in?
I'll have to complete the tool, yes, complete the tool each year and bring it up.
We're looking at nine cents for next year though.
Yes.
Will that change? Is that a possibility? That could change.
As the reimbursement rates change, the tool will change and so it is possible to change it.
Twenty-five cents is not, at a hundred and seventy-four school days, is an increase of forty-three dollars and fifty cents per child, paying child per year. It's about five bucks a month. So are we looking at either a twenty-five cent now or ten, ten, ten? Is that kind of what?
Basically, if we do ten this year, we'll continue being about thirty cents behind on.
But then we got a guaranteed ten extra.
Yes.
The federal reimbursement rate is going to be resolved.
And if we're running us, I guess my, my concern is if we're running a surplus every year, then I mean, I think you run into the issue of, yes, the tool tells us that we need to make these increases. But, you know, that's all, with all deference to our colleagues at USDA, that's some nameless, faceless bureaucrat that is saying here, complete this tool. And I think we have a responsibility to know our community. And I, my, my issue with this is, and I certainly appreciate the financial perspective, but I also have to balance that with the fact that I think our community's been really generous with us the last couple of years. And especially when you're talking about, I know just the paying families, but, you know, the fifty-dollar, roughly fifty-dollar increase, if you're making, I did, my numbers say, I mean, if you're, you're making around thirty-two, thirty-three thousand dollars a year for the state. to your two income household and you've got that 3% raise that the governor passed a few weeks ago, that, I mean, we're making a claim on that, you know, eight, roughly an 8% claim, claim on that because their take home pay is about 60 bucks a month. And so just the school district by ourselves, we're carving out five bucks. And I know that doesn't sound like a lot, but I think you've got a lot of families out there that would probably say, well, you know, we'd appreciate whatever leniency or whatever space you guys could give us. And so that's, I keep coming back to the fact that we're running a surplus. And I know that at some point, you know, we don't want to get too far out of bounds. One of the questions I did have for you was, is there a bound? Is there a, is there a deviation that we get so far out that USDA says, that's it, you know, you're, you're too far out? And, you know, they step in and make the decision for you?
No. No, not today. Right.
Well, they'll, they'll, they'll reduce our reimbursement.
Well, and I guess that would be my question is, is where's that sweet spot? If we're running a surplus, I, I would be okay with, with not increasing prices or at least reducing the increase to where it's almost kind of like your, your taxes where, you know, if we're breaking even, right? If we're not, if we're not carrying funds over for next year, great. And if we're not having to move funds around in other parts of the budget to be able to fund a shortfall, then, you know, then to me, I think that's, you know, give or take a little bit on both, on either side, then I think that would be, that would be great. And I think the community would appreciate that. But, you know, again, I, I understand, you know, I understand the perspective you guys have and I don't, I, the last thing I would want to see us do is end up having to come back, you know, because of poor governance and say, hey, community, sorry. Yeah, it was good for another couple of years, but now we got to hit you with a, you know, 30 cent increase or a 50 cent increase.
I think that's what's important to look at, which is why I made the motion. We haven't, we haven't done anything for three years and this would be a fourth school year. I, I mean, I have three kids in the district, I can't feed my three kids lunch anywhere for less than $10, anywhere, unless I pack it myself, which.
I appreciate that, sure.
I guess, I mean, when we say we have surplus, but, I mean, how much of a surplus are we talking about?
That's what I asked earlier.
Yeah, and so.
But when you think about that, we're not charging any indirect costs. So no utilities, no rent on the facilities.
Right.
So it's not like a true restaurant operating on this.
Just the cost of the meal, right?
Subsidizing with.
Nope.
Space and utilities.
So I have a motion and a second. We've had a lot of discussions. Is there any more discussion, are there any more questions? Call for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Want to oppose? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. All right, first read of MSBA policy GCJ. This is the professional staff. We just, remember, we just changed the one word of principal to administrator.
So we had a discussion about the permission for a teacher to leave the building during regular hours. And a concern was raised by one of our staff, one of our faculty, who's a staff representative, about that being limited to only the principal. And so asked for us to consider, and Brian went back and we talked about it and felt like that that was a reasonable request, given that teacher the opportunity to get permission from an administrator that principal is not available. And so we're bringing this as a first read for this adoption with that one edit.
Can we waive your second read? Well, does that mean that they can't get permission from the principal? It has to be an administrator?
Well, the principal is.
Principal is considered an administrator.
The same thing. The principal could be. Any administrator.
It could be any administrator, right, in the building.
And it's a rare catch when they are leaving.
I wanted to make sure they didn't have to get permission from you.
That's why his call sheet's so long.
Right.
Yeah, it gives them, gives them the opportunity to ask more flexibility to who they might ask.
But still be held accountable.
And Laurel, I think you're correct. We did say that we were, the, you're, you're confirming that we did, the policy committee did recommend waiving the second reading and approving this. So we entertain that motion.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Future dates are on there, I don't know that I need to read them to you. Next couple of board meetings and opening session, are we having coffee with Larry in July? Because that would be July 5th. Or is that suspended?
We are not. Ryan sent out here and if there was a question about having it, we put on the whole day for the summer, last summer when we had the June and July, really what's, what's intended so of bringing that back and starting in August, we will, but not having it here in July.
Okay. And so I would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Motion to suspend, open and enter into the closed meeting by roll call vote pursuant to chapter 610, that 021 of the revised statutes and the various sections. One, legal actions. Three, hiring, firing, disciplining. Thirteen, individually identifiable personnel records. And fourteen, records which are protected from disclosure by law.
I need a second. Okay, my roll call votes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Laura, Mike?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Yes, we will take a five minute recess for bathroom breaks. Back in five minutes and go into.